The January 20th meeting of the Corrine Township Zoning Commission will come to order. Could we all stand up and do your pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, under my nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and strong.
Okay, could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Chakovsky?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Teming?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the oath of office.
It'll be Tom and then Mr. Westfall, it'll be Mr.?
Gertie.
And then also, there are a few, three will stand here.
Are we old?
What I'll do is I'll do you all once. When I say state your name, we'll kind of run it through the?
I believe so. If you could please raise your right hand. Aye.
Hello, Mr. Gertie.
J. Thomas Westfall.
solemnly swear?
solemnly, all my errands where?
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America?
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws and resolutions of Corrine Township?
And the laws and resolutions of Corrine and Haven.
And that, to the best of my ability?
And that, to the best of my ability?
Will faithfully discharge the duties?
Will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of a member of the zoning commission?
Of a member of the zoning commission.
In and for Corrine Township?
In and for Corrine and Haven.
Hamilton County?
Hamilton County.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You are now officially able to serve in the capacity as a regular member or alternate with respect to Corrine Township Zoning Commission. Thank you for, some of you, your past service and thank you for future service on behalf of the township.
Sorry, I don't move as fast as I used to. Okay, next on the agenda is the election of officers. The Chair would request the nomination for the officers to serve during the 2015 year.
For the 2015 calendar year, I will nominate as Chairman of the Zoning Commission for this year, Mr. Westfall, repeating his role, and that Mr. Taylor act as Vice Chairman for the year 2015.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved, we don't have to roll call that, do we?
Um, no.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we elect Tom Westfall as the Chairman for 2015 and Scott Taylor as the Vice Chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the December 16th meeting. Does anybody have any changes or additions?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes of the December 16th, 2014 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now it's time for the public address. That's where anybody who is here has something that they want, would like to present to the Commission that is not on the agenda, this is where they do it.
Good evening, I'm Rob Smijunas of Van der Kar. We have a presentation tonight that we are not going to be making with respect to the Kroger and for J.D. Byerider. We've had a number of things that we're trying to put together for this proposal and we'll be holding it off and doing this on your next meeting. And I think that's for the benefit of all.
Thank you, we look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when it comes time to do the Kroger Marketplace, maybe we would, I would recommend making a motion to table that agenda item to this February meeting.
The Chair would entertain a motion to table the case ZA 201-4-07 Kroger Marketplace and JD Byerider minor modification to a final development plan.
I'll make that motion that we table those two cases till a future date.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we roll call this one? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we table ZA 201-4-07 Kroger Marketplace and JD Byerider minor modifications, EFP. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chakovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Aye.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Westfall, since this is a public speaking part, is there any recommendations that the audience can make to the zoning committee about ZA 2014-07? Ever not in the agenda meetings ever sent out today?
Generally, a final development plan doesn't have a public input portion.
Right, there is no public input for a final development plan.
But since it's not on the agenda tonight, maybe under the public address?
Which, what, who? He gave me a case number, but I'm not?
He's talking about the Kroger project. Perhaps since it's not on the agenda, maybe he could, he could address the zoning commission, since it's been tabled, perhaps he can address the zoning commission with his concerns about
Okay.
I would say, okay, but we're going to keep this limited because we've already had a public hearing about this. Okay.
My name's Jim Acton, I live here in a township. I don't know, is this on Waycross tonight or not yet? It is? My question is, in all the other zoning meetings that I've sat here in front of, and there's been different people come up to make presentations and suggestions, there's been members here that have suggested about planting flowers, trees, and so on. Irrigation had to be supplied. In the current proposal, there is nothing about irrigation for these trees or bushes anywhere. Recommendation, look it over and make those recommendations so we don't have dead trees and dead bushes in such a beautiful Kroger place. The other two concerns I've had, I presume Kroger is still leasing cabs to drive their trailers. I was approached about bringing up the subject about if Kroger so chooses, it would be nice for the residents that live back in that area that they impose a self-composed delivery time from like 11:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning. This would include all vendors, olive beer trucks, milk trucks, Kroger trucks, any trucks that are coming in, any vendors delivering product to the Kroger stores, so those restaurants back there can get some sleep. This would also include the unloading of those trucks and not having them idling in the Kroger parking lot or out on the Elitop. Anybody have any questions for me? Why am I these suggestions?
They're pretty self-explanatory.
Please?
They're self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one comment, you might want to talk to the gentleman from Kroger who's in the back of the room before you leave and discuss your suggestions with them. That might be a good place to start. Not that your suggestions are going to fall on deaf ears when this Kroger application's finally heard, because you're correct, where you routinely do require irrigation for a lot of the landscaping, but you might want to just discuss it with the gentleman from Kroger here tonight.
Mr. Teming?
Good place to start.
Isn't that part of the zoning commission's duty to assure that there's irrigation, irrigations? I go back to Snow's Lake particularly, there's a lot of discussion there. I pour a couple out there, I don't have the money that Kroger has. Kroger's a great, great company. They supplied my salary for about 50 years, me selling product to them. There's some other presentations that were made here about shrubbery and that, and those companies have also had to supply irrigation. I'd just like to see those trees grow and not happen what happened across the corner here, we have a tree that was put in and I complained and complained about it dying and finally they took it out, which I was happy to see. I hope it comes back in the spring of the year. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission with anything that is not on the agenda? We're now in the final development plan and the way a final development plan works is we're going to hear case 8-88 Walmart, 10-240 Corrine Avenue, minor modification to a final development plan, it's signage. The way a final develop, minor modification to a final development plan works is the zoning staff makes a presentation on a request. The applicant may also make a presentation on a request. The zoning commission will have a discussion followed by a motion to approve or deny the request, and the commission will have a roll call vote. As I said, we're going to discuss case 8-88 Walmart 10-240 Corrine, minor modification to a final development plan concerning signage. Do you have, does staff have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is what I believe to be a very sort of cut and dry case. Walmart is requesting a change in the wall signage at their location at, it's the Walmart North, 10240 Corrine Avenue. This is the Walmart store. We have Corrine Avenue running sort of north-south here and 275 running sort of east and west here. This is the Walmart building in the, in the back right corner. We have the Dry Ridge and Dry Ridge connector here. The zoning on the property is planned development business and because it's a planned development, the final development plan for this site included a signage approval and the applicant is looking to modify that signage approval. The proposal, in a nutshell, is pretty simple. It just, it decreases, the net effect of this proposal decreases the wall signage on the building by about 16 square feet from 558 square feet to 542 square feet. What we see on the screen right now is our proposed elevations. I think, you know, my opinion is that it is a very tasteful treatment of the facade. The front elevation is on top and then the right elevation is shown on the bottom here. So, you know, this being a very sort of cut and dry case, my recommendation is to approve the minor modification to the final development plan and that concludes my presentation.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
I have a presentation, but I am here to answer any questions you might have about it. I did want to make a question, though, I was noticing we accidentally need the wrong square footage for the outdoor living plan. We're only decreasing by about 6 square feet instead of 60.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith, do you have any questions for her?
No, thank you.
Mr. Teming?
It looks to me as all they want to do is change the signs and she gets your six-point star, whatever it is.
That actually stands for Walmart.
Yeah, right.
It does.
Oh, is that what that's supposed to mean?
Yeah, the top three are the?
Because it looks an awful lot like the logo that Target uses, except it's red.
I'm not going to comment on the similarities there.
Gee, I just learned something.
No further questions.
Mr. Chakovsky?
What happens to this pylon sign when the road starts getting biked?
That is actually a mall pylon sign, we just have a panel in it, so?
It's going to be relocated and you can see the initial structure in the median of the entrance drive back to the development, so it's going to be relocated to that pylon.
I just thought since they were prominent enough that they own that sign, and we're allowing them to put it back up to the height instead of the 15-foot regulations when that gets removed?
Yes, because it was a result of the road widening instance, but it will be a more modern design.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Taylor?
I have no questions. We're always happy when someone wants to introduce their sign.
Okay, does anybody on the commission have any comments they would like to make? Mr. Chakovsky?
No comments.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Teming? Ms. Smith?
No, thank you.
No comments being needed. The Chair would entertain a motion that we accept minor modification to final development plan for Walmart at 10-20, I'm sorry, 10-240 Corrine Avenue.
In case number 8-88, I'll make the motion that we accept the, approve the application for the modification to the final development plan without conditions.
Without conditions.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minor modification, 8-88 for Walmart, 10-240 for signage. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chakovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Yep.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing for case, well, let me explain how a public hearing works first. The zoning staff will make a presentation of the request. The applicant may also make a presentation of the request. Meeting is open for public comment, three to five minutes, no redundancy, then closed for public input. This is followed by discussion among the commissioners. The zoning commission will then have a motion to approve or deny the request. The commission will then have a roll call vote and the decision will be sent to the Board of Trustees. The case that we have a public hearing on right now is ZA 201-4-09 parentheses 669 close parentheses Chick-fil-A, major modification to a final development plan. Does staff have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I should start this presentation off by apologizing for misspelling Chick-fil-A. There should be an "A" at the end instead of an "E", so that's going to be throughout the presentation. Sorry to the applicant, I apologize. Okay, so this, this case has come before the zoning commission as an informal concept hearing. That happened back in October. The applicant came and presented their concept and heard comments from the board. Since that time, the proposal has gotten a little bit more meat on the bones and we now have a preliminary development plan application. That preliminary development plan was heard by the Regional Planning Commission on January 8th and the Regional Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. So, just to introduce you again to the site, we have Corrine Avenue, north-south. This is North Gate Mall to the northeast of the picture here. This is the site right here. The applicant proposes to develop the corner of Mall and Corrine for Chick-fil-A. Currently, the zoning on the property is planned development business, so it requires, and this being the addition of a new building, it requires a major modification to the final development plan, so that's why we're here. So, the site plan that was proposed shows the Chick-fil-A building, shows parking, it has locations for the drive aisle and we'll recall that, as with all of our cases, in issues related to landscaping, lighting, parking signage, architectural details, those are all handled in the final development plan. What we're talking about here tonight is use, density, intensity, setbacks, buffers, et cetera. So, your packets included conceptual renderings, but this is what we're going to focus our conversation on this evening. So, the zoning resolution requires for a preliminary development plan to be approved. The zoning commission requires that a project meet seven criteria and as I did my review, I found that it did in fact meet six of the criteria and I condition my recommendation for approval on the meeting of the seventh. So, we have to look at whether or not the PDP is consistent with the land use plan and the comprehensive plan. I address that in my staff report and find that it does. The second item is that it'll have a beneficial effect on the community. The proposed news, the proposed use is new to our market and I think, you know, township's economic development efforts, this falls in line with our economic development efforts. They don't propose any public roads, so item number three doesn't pose an issue. Item four, or criteria number four, is that the site be accessible from public roads and the Ohio County, or excuse me, the Hamilton County Engineers Office and the Ohio Department of Transportation have both reviewed the proposal and I included their comments in my staff report. They aren't proposing any new ingress or egress from either, you know, neither Mall Road or Corrine. You would continue to enter the site by turning east onto Mall Road and then you move east and enter as you would for Aldi down here. So, item number five is that the applicant does not propose right now the designation of 15% of the site as common open space and I recommend that, that the commission recommend to the trustees that that 15% be provided. The sixth criteria is that, asks about whether or not the preliminary development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning resolution and I believe that it is. And finally, the preliminary development plan has been transmitted to all agencies and departments charged with the responsibility for review and it has been. So, so, those are the criteria that, you know, the trustees will have to use to make, finally approve the preliminary development plan. They are looking to you for a recommendation and my recommendation to you is to approve the preliminary development plan with several conditions. The first of which I just mentioned, which is that the development shall contain a minimum of 15% common open space. And the second is that a detailed parking analysis be provided for the entire shopping center to make sure that the shopping center meets our parking rules that are found in 13-3 of the zoning resolution. And finally, the applicant does not propose currently a 15-foot streetscape buffer yard and that's very important. I mean, we've talked a lot about our efforts to improve the look of the corridor and all of the other businesses as they've redeveloped have included this streetscape elements and it's very important. So, that's that. Related to the second condition about a detailed parking analysis, the applicant proposes to do some shared parking, which I am 100% in support of because I think a lot of the parking at this site is underutilized, you know, is not utilized. So, I think that a shared parking arrangement works. I just want to make sure that, you know, we have the numbers right and so I'm asking them to do a parking analysis. But that's what I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
I did.
Mr. Teming?
Yep, since this is actually being placed in an existing parking lot?
Yep.
Okay. How do they accomplish getting 15% of the site as common open space? That, when I read that, it doesn't say this, but the way I read it is green space.
Yes.
So, how are they going to do that when they just take this development and drop it into a sea of asphalt?
Right, and that's a very good question.
How are they going to do that?
Yep, very good question. And this site plan doesn't do it justice, but there is, they are going to be opening up some of the asphalt and landscaping it. So, this strip that runs like this and curves around here is all going to be landscaped and then I believe that this little piece here is going to be landscaped, there's going to be landscaping here. So, they're actually pretty close and I believe that if they can, if they can put the streetscape buffer yard in, they'll be at or over 15%. I mean, it's real close.
The streetscape buffer, are they allowed to include that as part of the 15%?
Of the site?
Yeah.
If it's on the site?
It sounds to me like they got to do, got to do both. The streetscape buffer's got to be, what, 15 feet? So, if there's a requirement that there be a 15-feet streetscape buffer and there's a requirement for 15% common open space?
Yep.
I mean, are they allowed to, you know?
Right.
Do you understand my question?
I do understand, absolutely.
Are they allowed to, you know, make two and two to three?
The other, the other option?
That's a question.
Yeah.
I'm looking for an answer, maybe, maybe there's not one. You know, in the past, how have we done this? Because these are common conditions from the zoning code, you know? The 15-foot setback and the 15%?
Common open space. Yeah, I think that they can get to common open space also by, they're going to be required as we look at the parking to put in a landscaped island somewhere to break up this and also over here.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah, I think that they're going to be able to get there, but yeah.
We can talk about it.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions?
I'd kind of like to see some streetscape buffing, just like what is happening right now at the corner of Springfield and Corrine where?
Exactly.
Shell is putting all that landscaping, not on just Corrine, but they're continuing around the corner.
Exactly.
So, you know, maybe even around the corner on Mall Road where the telephone pole and all that ugly stuff is happening there, that that could start getting landscaped. What about light poles? Are we going to require them to put the decorative light poles?
Absolutely, yep, 70-foot on center, yep.
And then we resolve the dumpster issue? Could please somebody just keep the conversation down? Excuse me? Excuse me? The, we resolve that dumpster issue over there?
The dumpster has been relocated from, you'll recall that it used to be sitting out here on Corrine Avenue and that was a major issue for me and the commission. So, the dumpster's been relocated to the back corner here and it's going to be, you know, my hope is that it's screened with good landscaping and also a dumpster enclosure, so?
So, they got permission from the owner from, since they couldn't get the full acre that we were, that we were asking for, they got permission to get entry for a couple of
Yes.
Couple of those dumpsters?
Yep, so they'll be accessing the dumpster from off-site really, down here.
And what's the plan of enclosure on that? I mean, I know whether we're, we don't have everything here.
Yep.
We're going to get it at the final, but what is the plan of enclosing that?
I think there's representative from the owner, if maybe they could, they could speak to that, but yeah.
Come up to the? Yep, come up to?
Scott Hall, representing Houck Holdings, owner of the shopping center. Chick-fil-A's prototypical dumpster enclosure is a brick surround matching the building with steel gates with vinyl planks on them on the access side and they're an open-top type of enclosure.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay.
Jeff, please tell me how under the protection of this Hamilton County stormwater and infrastructure?
Yep.
From this Hamilton County GIS, what is the official statement?
So, they, Geographic Information Systems, so they are CAGIS, Cincinnati Area Geographic Information Systems is, system is a, the organization that collects all of the geographic information for the city and puts it together in file, computer files and then shares it with organizations like us, like Corrine, all the townships and the county and even private individuals that want to use that information. So, we send it to them often just to let them know that there's development and that they may need to alter their files in the future, you know, so that they're at least put on notice that development is happening and they may need to change some of their files. So, for example, like all of, when I make these maps, I use all this information that's up on the, on the screen here in these maps, comes from CAGIS. And what they're going to have to do after this, after this building is built, is they're going to have to create another one of these building polygons where that is. And so, it just sort of puts them on notice that something is happening.
Okay, I guess my next question is, there doesn't have to be a storm for sewage or anything, but like I said, no response from Hamilton County stormwater and infrastructure?
Right, but they are absolutely going, they didn't respond to when we sent, when we sent them the preliminary development plan, but as, as this moves through the review process, they are absolutely going to have to be involved because they have to okay all of the stormwater, the storm, the things that this applicant is going to do to address stormwater. They're going to have to approve that. So, they're going to, they're going to review and work with the developer to make sure stormwater's taken care of.
And we don't have any fire concerns?
And we don't have any fire concerns, is that it also?
That's right, yep. The fire department reviewed it and they don't have any concerns at this point.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions? Does the applicant have a presentation for it?
Good evening, Doug Leaning with Wolfert, representing Chick-fil-A. I really, I believe Jeff pretty well covered what we are presenting. I will build to, or attempt to field questions if you have any for me.
Mrs. Smith, do you have a question for him?
Not at this moment.
Mr. Temming?
So you heard my question to the, to Mr. Mills about the 15-foot setback and the, or the 15-foot setback and the 15% green space, so what do you, what do you think you ought to do?
Well, I think we're anticipating.
We may be, we may be able to resolve it by agreement and we don't have to worry about what Mr. Mills thinks.
Well, I believe that we were anticipating combining the two, so we would have the 15-foot setback and that would be part of the 15% open space. And I think that's justifiable based on the current state of the property. There is no grass except for along the edge of the pavement.
Okay, well, here's my feeling on it and that is, you know, we get a lot of developments across Corrine Avenue and of course, the township's concerned with look from the street, no matter what the development is. There's some long, long developments along Corrine Avenue, Corrine Avenue being a case in point, Stone Creek being another. And they all, since our own zoning resolution went into effect, you know, have dedicated that green space, 15-foot setback along Corrine Avenue without asking us to let them blend it with the 15%. Because the frontage on Corrine Avenue is one thing, but you also have a development and this one's kind of a case in point, meaning your, the building itself is backing up to another commercial development, so you're going to get a lot of traffic not only going by development on Corrine Avenue, but behind it and alongside of it and that sort of thing. And so that's another view of your development, not just from Corrine Avenue where we're on green space, but maybe, you know, from behind and alongside it where we'd like some green space also. So I'm not sure, you know, in council for the townships here, Mr. Solomon, maybe he knows, but I'm not sure that she can blend the 15-foot setback requirement or streetscape requirement on Corrine Avenue and call it, hey, that's part of the 15%. No, it's probably, probably going to be determined by an authority higher than me, but I'm just, I'm just making the point.
Okay.
The other question I had for you is, I know you came up for the preliminary back in October, I think you were here for that, weren't you Doug?
That is correct.
Okay. And the gentleman that owns the center just came up and talked about the surround that you're going to use for the dumpster area and I remember that when you came up for the, the informal that the dumpster was out further west, closer to Corrine Avenue when we asked you to move. Now, I know you have to have a dumpster, okay? And it's going to be visible from somewhere, but is that going to be, the type of surround for the dumpster and that sort of thing, is that going to be an FDP item?
Yep, sure will. Yeah, we'll have elevations of the dumpster enclosure.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the only other question I had is, Mr. Mills suggested that the 15%, if you have to do the 15% other, in addition to the 15-foot setback, could be along the back of the property, I'll say the east end of the property or along the south end of the property, is that doable?
We would have to, I think it's going to take a combination of shared parking and being able to eliminate some of the parking on our site and ensuring that the overall shopping center will still have appropriate number of spaces. But we can definitely study that. We can also narrow the drive aisles from 30 feet to 24 feet to buy some additional landscape space.
Now, 24 feet, that's the minimum we, that I think I'd have voted.
I believe so.
Okay, is that right?
Yep.
Did I see it right? Okay.
So we'll, we definitely intend to meet the requirements. We'll, we'll do our best to get to that point and I think we may need the help of reducing additional parking.
Okay, the other, other question I had for you, and I'm glad a representative from the, from the centers here, is Chick-fil-A going to lease this space or are you buying this parcel?
They will lease it.
You're leasing it? Okay. So in order to meet that 15% requirement, if you got another 10 feet on the south and another 10 feet on the east, that might do it for you, right?
Uh.
If you, if you had.
That, that would help, however.
I, I know that's a, I'm looking at you and I asked that question, but it's really directed towards your.
Yes.
I can answer that pretty distinctly, the, the area that.
I know I'm asking you to give a parking spaces, but hey.
I know exactly what you're asking.
All right, okay, great.
The area that Chick-fil-A's development can take place in, based on all of our leases and this, you know, all the, Aldi, the Shoe Carnival, Jack's, all of these people have defined that specific area that their development can take place in. And it's up to Chick-fil-A then to fit their project into the, those confines. And the parking issue is one of a, shopping center parking issue, so we can share spaces, but physically, the physical improvements have to stay within the bounds of the described area.
And is that because that your leases with your tenants require a minimum number of spaces in the lot? Or is it because this footprint is one that was set up years ago for an outlot and Chick-fil-A just happens to be the first one that really wants to do it?
The second one, yes. It was set up before Chick-fil-A was even a potential tenant.
Okay, but we've never approved this outlot as.
It's not, it's not a separate lot, no it isn't. It's an area in the parking lot, yeah. And it, it's been defined in the lease, in the other various leases as that being set aside for an allowable building as an outlot. Just, yeah, that specific area, just the same as the outlot where the Chipotle and US Bank sets.
So there's no change in the size of it?
Chick-fil-A needs to deal inside the four corners.
Yeah, let me just ask it this way, if you had to, to give them 10 more feet to the east and 10 more feet to the south, you could approach your current tenants and say, would you guys agree to this so we can get Chick-fil-A in here?
We could ask.
All right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the chances are slim, but we surely could ask.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll do the asking for you, it might increase the chances, I don't know. Mr. Mills is raising his hand.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I had a chance to dig through the code a little bit and the, the way that the code is written, let me read some things to you real quick.
Before you get to that.
Yep.
Mr. Mills, let me just ask one more question. If we approve this tonight, this footprint is final, all right?
This footprint?
This footprint.
This footprint.
Right, so we could not compel them to come back with a final development plan with a little bit larger of a lot so that they could accomplish their 15-foot.
How's the time to do that?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, if I could interject before, I think if they save on that 24-foot, instead of taking it from 30 to 24 to the minimum, you got at least 6-foot to work with, if I'm understanding what we're talking about here, about the buffer zone and whatnot. Because right now, I see the parking space is going right up to the grass area, correct?
Correct.
And your drive aisle is 30 feet, which minimum is 24, so you can at least take away 6, 6 feet to work with. Plus, you're going to need curbs because of the code for what, 25 cars or more and whatnot. I mean, if that's what we're talking about here, I think they could achieve it with, just by reducing some of those drive aisles.
That's, that was my thought.
That's it?
If.
I mean, I don't.
If the buffer zone can be part of the 15.
Yeah.
Correct. That's the next thing right there.
Yeah, so 9.3.7 talks about common open space in planned development districts and it says, "There shall be reserved within the tract to be developed as a PD, a minimum percentage of land area of the entire tract for use as common open space." And then we, when it gets to the discussion of streetscape buffer, it says, "There shall be a minimum 15-foot streetscape buffer yard beginning at the right-of-way line at any street." So the streetscape buffer begins on the tract and then the common open space applies to the entire tract. So because the streetscape is on the tract, I, I would interpret that to mean that the streetscape buffer yard could be included in the calculation for 15%.
And I would agree with that.
Okay, so given all that, I heard Mr. Mills say in his presentation that you currently don't meet the 15 feet of buffer. In, in this plan as it's presented, do you know what the buffer zone is here?
Um.
It looked, and I didn't see it, but there's a lot of numbers on here.
It's, it varies, I want to say it's a minimum three and a half feet from the right-of-way, three and a half to four and a half feet.
You've got a lot to add.
Correct.
Even the 6 feet out of the drive aisle doesn't make that up, I mean?
No, it does not. I think the possibility is to eliminate the east island and shift the site eastward, maintaining just a small curb along the lease line.
Show us what that means.
He's talking about the 5 foot.
I'm sorry.
He's talking about the 5 foot right here on the east side.
Shift it this way.
Correct, right where he's pointing.
Okay.
So it would eliminate that 5 foot and giving it that, what, 4 inches of, 4 inches of curb.
But eliminating that eliminates some of the 15% of green space.
That's true. We're, we're going to add at least one island on the site in the middle along Colrain, potentially more, you know, if it takes an additional island to get to the 15%, then that's what we'll do as long as we do meet the parking requirements of the shopping center.
It seems to me the bigger, it seems to me we're, we're past, if you can include the 15-foot buffer zone in your 15%, you're okay. Seems to me the bigger problem is getting to the 15-foot buffer zone.
I, I, I think you, you nailed it.
Have I nailed it?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's very tight.
So if you can get the 15-feet buffer, I think you'll have your 15%. So, okay. Let me jump to a different question. Can you just help us understand the, the traffic pattern here? How it's going to flow? I mean, I see the drive-through lanes, but I'm not exactly sure where cars are coming in and out other than in the drive-through lane.
Well, the, there's, there's a right-in entry from Colrain to the south of the site and that's probably going to be your primary entry point from the south.
Right before you get to Chipotle, right after you go through Chipotle.
Right.
It's.
Directly into this lot?
Correct.
Sort of.
Well.
I thought the only way in was from Mall Road or?
There's a right-in, just past Chipotle.
Okay, okay, yep, I remember.
There's a light there and then there's a, there's an entry right, right after Chipotle on the, on the, on the east side of the street.
Okay.
It's actually, Jeff, it's on Colrain.
On Colrain.
There's a right-in there. Yep.
Okay.
And so that'll probably be the, anybody coming northbound will come in that way and then southbound will probably turn on Mall.
That's kind of a tricky entrance. Is there any plans on kind of redoing that? Because it's got a little island in there, it's got a little swing and it's going to get a, it's always been tricky ever since it's been. Yeah, the one right there next to Chipotle, it's always been tricky, even when service merchandise was there, it's always been a tricky little thing.
Okay.
You're talking about once you get on the site though, right?
Yeah, once you, once you get into it, it kind of swings and swings with a little island or something in there, it's just kind of weird, it's a weird.
Go back to the floor. So if I come out of the drive-through, I get to the stop, can I turn right or left?
Yes.
Okay. So if I turn right, I'm going to come up past about eight or 10 parking spots and then if I want to turn on the Mall Road, I've got to make a left?
Correct.
Okay. Making sure I understand it all.
That's probably the easiest way out, because if you turn left, you're kind of going back through.
Going back through the parking lot, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we all want to make this work, but I think you're going to have to get to the 15-foot of buffer zone because I don't think that's something that the commission is going to be willing to give on. That's, that's me talking, but, but I think my comrades here are probably in agreement to that. That's what we've done for everyone else along Corrine.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
No questions.
Okay.
Do we get included the detailed parking analysis?
That was not included tonight. So that'll come at the final development plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? The chair would entertain a motion to open the public comment, part of the final development plan.
I'll make that motion.
We move in a second as we open the public comment portion of the final development plan, all. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I've got one name, Amy Cardosa Herosa. Was it, well, that was for Burger? Okay. Is there anybody, anyone else going once?
Mr. Temming, Mr. Taylor, you two gentlemen are the ones always wanting trees and the flowers and all that irrigated. Is there any irrigation to this place or is there any trees or any shrubbery?
Let me ask, let me say one thing, because irrigation is not a part of the zoning code. So if we make a recommendation, we have to all make the recommendation or at least three of us. So that would be a suggestion from somebody here. If it was a zoning, part of zoning, it would be a part of a zoning requirement, correct?
Yeah, irrigation isn't required in our zoning resolution and the, yeah, landscaping is very important, but that's handled at the final development plan. So right now, they're just trying to figure out where the building is located and get, make sure that the setbacks are right and the buffers are properly placed. But that, those important issues related to landscaping will be handled at final development plan.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
But, but if they're taking good notes, they're listening to.
Again, I don't know. I'm asking.
Thanks, Mr. Epp.
Sir, anyone else that would like to address the?
Yes, Matt Dietzort, any other information you need?
Corrine resident?
Yes, Corrine resident.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one quick question from the October hearing. The, you had mentioned the sign, we're going to jump onto current sign.
Awesome.
Right, but I think at the time, there was a vacant spot, I believe like within the week of that October meeting, vape shops opened and opened that open spot. So what's the plans with signage as far as Corrine Avenue?
I believe at an island.
Yeah, so that's, that's also something that will be handled at final development plan.
Right.
And that wouldn't be my preferred alternative, but, but that's something that will be handled at the final development plan.
Right. And it's still just a preliminary and that's the only question I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Okay, I'll make a motion if we close the public portion of the.
We move in a second as we close the public comment section of the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carried. Okay, does anybody on this commission have any comments they would like to make? Any questions, any, anything?
I think we've been clear.
Yeah, the only comment I have is I don't know whether the 15-foot buffer and the 15%, if you get to blend those or not, but I would like to see the 15-foot setback along Corrine Avenue. Your competitors and neighbors across the street, McDonald's had to do it, Burger King had to do it, they've all had to do it and, you know, we want to maintain that consistency along Corrine Avenue for sure. You know, I, you know, as far as how we interpret the code, as to whether or not those two could be blended, I don't think that's my function. We'll just make a motion, I anticipate making a motion. We'll just make a motion, I anticipate making a motion to approve the preliminary development plan, and I think that's what this is, even though it's called amendment to a final development plan. If we incorporate the conditions that staff is suggesting, they'll have that issue to deal with on the 15-foot, 15%. Somebody's going to read it and tell you what you can do. That's all I had.
Anyone else? The Chair would entertain a motion that we accept, case number ZA 2014-09, Chick-fil-A, major modification to an FDP.
Okay, in case number ZA 2014-009, I will make a motion that we approve the preliminary development plan or modification of the final development plan. I'm not sure how we, what we call it, but it's labeled preliminary development plan, that's the way I look at it, with the follow, with the three conditions recommended by staff. First, that the development shall contain a minimum of 15% common open space in compliance with zoning resolution. Two, that a detailed parking analysis be provided for the entire shopping center that meets Section 13.3 of the Rose Resolution. And lastly, that a minimum 15-foot streetscape buffer yard shall be provided along Corrin Avenue and Mall Drive in compliance with Section 15.4.1 of the resolution, and that is my motion.
I'll second that motion.
We move in second as we accept ZA, case number ZA 2014-09, Chick-fil-A, major modification or preliminary development plan with the three modifications stated. Do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chakovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Teming?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye, motion carried. Good luck. Next on the agenda is informal concept review. We have none. After that, there is old business, is there any old business?
No old business.
Next item is new business, do we have any new business?
No, new business.
Administration, you have any announcements?
I do, yes. Could we, so, on Friday, the 31st, the David Allor workshop is coming up, which is a training, it's a top-notch training. And this year, the program includes yours truly as a presenter, so I'm really excited about that. But I was wondering, the township will pay for your attendance if, if you would like to go as a training, you know, to do training. I've heard from Mr. Chakovsky and Mr. Westfall. Did anybody else want to go? The 31st?
31st.
That's a Friday.
What time?
30th.
Oh, 30th, I'm sorry, it's Friday, the 30th. All day, so eight to.
Thursday, eight to about four.
Yeah.
Friday, the 30th.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
That's a week, yeah. Not this, we're having Friday to.
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, yeah, get back to me by, like, tomorrow or the next day, so I can, we can do this. You, you have to work, Mr. Teming?
Actually, Jeff, I'd love to attend that, but on, did you say January 31st?
January 30th.
Yeah, I'll be about 900 miles south of that location.
Oh, that's too bad.
That is too bad.
That is too bad. Mrs. Smith, would you like to?
Teming cannot go 900 miles.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, let me know, let me know in the next couple of days, so we can, okay. Registration closes on Friday, so, thank you.
That, that was an announcement, right?
It was.
Next meeting is Tuesday, February 17, 2015.